Everybody and welcome to the regular meeting of the board. Two point zero one was called to order. Before we move into the pledge, though, last week, a little over a week, Dave Troyer passed away unexpectedly, so I would like to do a moment of silence in his honor, please. Thank you. He will be missed and our thoughts and prayers are with Amy, Jack and Ace, so keep them in your prayers, please. Two point zero two is the pledge of allegiance. If you please stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Two point zero three is adoption of the agenda. It is recommended that the agenda for December 3rd, 2025, regular meeting of the Board of School Trustees be adopted as presented. So moved.
Second.
So moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Three is recognition. Three point zero one, cavemen in the community club, Mr. Ebride.
Good evening, President Parks, Superintendent Dr. Stevens and school board. My name is Randy Ebride. I'm an English teacher at Mishawaka High School. Just want to give you guys a quick update on some results for the second year in a row. We did a No Shave November campaign at Mishawaka High School in order to raise funds for the American Cancer Society in the fight against breast cancer. And so I have with me some members of the cavemen and community club that are going to give you guys some further details. First is Megan.
Hi, my name is Megan Spencer and I'm going to be speaking. So this is the second year that MHS has participated in No Shave November and this benefits the American Cancer Society and students like myself and Bella. We worked on posters and flyers to promote and we also delivered pink fanny packs to participating staff members. And we also, participating staff members then collected donations throughout the month of November and the winner for the most collected was Mr. Hallicky and he's the English Department Chair.
I'm Isabella and I will be following up on what Megan said. So our why are the donations raised are for the American Cancer Society toward the fight against breast cancer. Our results are for the second year in a row, we raised over $900 and our plans for the expansion are for John Adams High School to join us this year and we hope to have additional schools join us next year in a friendly and impactful fundraising contest.
And so actually some of that information is outdated. We were able to do a little bit of a push towards the end and so the final amount was $1,043.52. I really wanted to, and I was a little competitive, wanted to break that thousand dollar mark. So even though this is a time of the year that my wife does not look forward to, so I do want to just give a quick shout out to the participating members, make sure I don't miss anyone. Principal Brew, Dr. Mann, Mr. Powell, Mrs. Sarkwether is with us tonight, Mr. Fozzo, Mr. Olson, Mr. Scoggan, Mr. Hallicky, Ms. Bonds, Mrs. Bond, Mr. Went and Mr. Modlin. And again, we did have John Adams High School join us this year. They raised over $1,000 and again, all going to American Cancer Society. We just want to just continue to grow. We kind of spearheaded it last year and it's a great cause. And so now at this time, I would like to welcome Mr. Jamie Miller to present in with our check.
Approximately 375,000 women are diagnosed with breast cancer every year and about 50,000 women die from breast cancer for every year. So we're very grateful for the support and the passion of Mishawaka High School and students and staff. These funds help us with the research that we provide, about $85 million currently in breast cancer research as well as significant local patient support programs. So thank you to the board for your support of your student body and of your faculty and thank you to these amazing students. These funds make a difference and they have an impact. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Three point zero two is results of Summer Learning Lab 2025, Dr. Stockfield and Mr. Delaine Wilson.
Thank you. Good evening, President Parks, Doctor Stevens, members of the board. Before I introduce Mr. Wilson, I just want to recognize all the people from both organizations, organizations that make this possible. I think it's no small feat when you think about Boys and Girls Club and School City of Mishawaka coming together to put on this program. You think all the way from prior to school starting, we had to deal with enrollment, communication, operations. We have to do it jointly. It's not just us operating in a silo and Boys and Girls Club operating in a silo. We have to do this together. And not only from the pre-school, to actually being in the classroom. So when in this program, we have our teachers, our principals, their staff members are all working together in the classroom. And even when we finish the program, our financial departments are working together. I just really want to truly recognize that if we're sharing these results, that it's possible because everyone has.
The whole organization is working collaboratively to make it possible, but they don't spend their tax. But this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Delaine Wilson. She's the executive officer of the Boys and Girls Club. He's excited to share our results from Summer Learning Lab.
So I'd like to start off by saying, this is actually, this is our second year doing Summer Learning Lab, the official program that's kind of hosted by the Mind Trust Foundation with Lavinia Curriculum and sponsored by IDOE. But this is actually our fourth year working together in the summer. And you can tell Katie and I, we get along well because we overcame our first year together. The first year of a lot of frustration, first year of a lot of confusion, but that's the beauty of a partnership where we do some, some really wonderful things together. And I'm excited to share this because not only did we do it in School City of Mishawaka and St. Joseph County, but because I think of the work that we did, that we began to pilot this, I believe, four years ago, we were actually able to take the model that I believe we've almost perfected, we're still getting better, but almost perfected, and kind of scale it as far down as Evansville. As far east as Madison, Indiana. And what we started four years ago, where there's summer school in the morning, inviting teachers in to do what they do well, to educate our kids, and then us in the afternoon, coming in, doing what we do well, giving kids opportunities and experiences. We were able to scale that across the state. And even more importantly, from my, from my perspective, we grew from maybe 300 kids, one, the first year we did this here at Liberty and John Young, to this past year, we served across the state of Indiana, more than 5,600 kids across the state of Indiana with the model that we began four years ago. So I'm excited about that partnership that has really reached and impacted the entire state. So I want to give you a kind of a picture of the entire scope and then I'll kind of draw right down to the two schools that are in School City of Mishawaka, which is John Young and Liberty. So across the state, we started out, we, we look at the growth in ELA and math. That's what we're really looking for. And so we're looking at how many students started out, were they proficient or not proficient? And we want to measure how many kids, how many students go from being non-proficient in ELA and math to proficient because of the instruction that took place during summer school. So our first stat up there is we saw that when, when kids scored either basic or proficient, 32% were basic inefficient or proficient in ELA, but by the end of summer school, there was 23.4, I'm sorry, there was 58, which means there was a 30, 23.4% increase. Likewise, in math, there was more than a 22% increase from those who started out testing proficient and there was growth toward the end of the year, which shows the impact of the teachers had on the students in the summer. But notice that what's an important rate across the entire state, that for summer school, there was a 66% attendance rate. There's a lot of other things that kids could be doing in the school, but it's a pretty good rate. And you'll be even more impressed with the attendance rate in St. Joseph County and it goes up in, in, in your school district. So similar, in across our region, St. Joseph County, we had a 22, 20% increase in ELA of kids who went from non-proficient to proficient. Then also in math, there was a 22% increase. Eighth grade across all of our clubs that we were responsible for, which were about 15 sites, that there was, that eighth graders had the most gains in ELA and seventh grade had the most gains in math with an average attendance rate of 74%, which is even higher, which is actually really, really good for summer. And so we're not just measuring proficiency. There was gains, even though not everyone became proficient, but what you can see, if you look at the slide, the pre, the pre-test, there were fewer kids who tested below proficient. So there were, there were gains that we really didn't measure, that we don't kind of shout out, but it's really important to understand how that bottom color is shrinking, that there were fewer kids who did not test, who, who, who were not in, or proficient. So that's an important thing. It touched everyone. So again, the importance of Summer Learning Lab for all of the kids is really, really important. And now specifically to the schools that are in your school district. So LaSalle Elementary, there was 221 kids with an average attendance rate of 72%. Again, that's really, really good. And the light blue on the left is of course the pre-test proficiency, how many tested. And then there was again, a major growth from, an 80% growth from pre-test to post-test that shows it's working. And then in math proficiency, the same thing. There was about a 21% increase. And as you can see, astoundingly, the sixth grader scored the highest growth in math at 33% and then sixth graders overall scored 25%. So the sixth graders saw the greatest improvement, again, preparing them for their next year at John Young. And then finally, John Young. So we, we saw a lot of growth in middle school. A 40% increase from those who tested proficient from the beginning toward the end, 40% and then in math, 33%. And of course, at John Young, eighth grader scored the best in literacy and seventh grader scored the best, 50% in math. So this is such a great program. And what I love about it is, you know, we've standardized this in such a way so that the teachers come in and we had so many repeat teachers from the year, year before, which says they had a great experience, that they, they enjoyed the, the, the smaller classroom sizes is what they had and they saw the gains that their students had. So I'm very grateful for the partnership that we have. And as one of the slides said earlier, school year or Summer Learning Lab 2026 is ready to go. So we are excited about that and we just want to serve more kids in Mishawaka. So thank you for the opportunity for us to come and, and share the details. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to comments and questions from the floor. Four point zero one, representatives of Mishawaka Parent Group. Four point zero two, representatives of school employees. Four point zero three, representatives of the Mishawaka Education Foundation and I seen Jane.
So this is not Christmas, but it is really going to be Christmas on Saturday. Oh, sorry, Theo. Anyway, I come bringing great news, guys. MEF had a chance through a very generous donor to give an additional $5,000 to our food drive, which is coming up for Mishawaka High School. And we're excited to be part of that. I, I think it speaks well of how the high school does the food drive. I also, I want to say, so many of you came to our wonderful dinner and auction. It was our very best one so far, raised $65,000. Yes. And it's because of all of you and how you spread the word and contributed and really appreciate it. Also, on a really good note, all of our teachers' wishes that were on our website have been funded. We're on a roll, guys. That's because School City's on a roll and we appreciate your partnership. Just an FYI, if you're looking for your invitation to my house for the holiday party, we've decided to do it at a different time because people are so busy. So relax and enjoy your time. Happy holidays.
Thanks, y'all. Four point zero four, general public, and we have David Strong, please.
Good evening, madam president, school board members, Dr. Stevens, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Strong. I reside and own real property at 305 George Street here in Mishawaka. I have no group affiliation. I'm not an employee, retired, a new vendor or contractor of School City of Mishawaka. With respect to this evening's agenda, I have one question plus four additional questions regarding school corporation operations. The agenda's specific question, item nine point zero four, policy analytics, C1 presentation, two questions here. One, what was the rationale behind contracting with Policy Analytics of Indianapolis to produce this report? And question two, how much does this report cost? For the four questions with regards to school corporation operations. Question one, does School City of Mishawaka employ one or more grant writers, either full-time or part-time, or is this service entirely contracted out? If yes, then how many grant writers does School City of Mishawaka actually employ? Question two, once School City has awarded a grant, who within School City of Mishawaka, other than the superintendent, is responsible for monitoring compliance with the terms and condition of each awarded grant? Question three, data published in the public domain on the Indiana Department of Education website indicates the chronic absenteeism rate for the Caveman Academy of Virtual Excellence, school ID number 7202, for the school year ended 2025 is 66.67%. And there's the math there to explain how that number was derived. During the same time period, the brick and mortar, 1202 Lincoln Way East, Mishawaka High School, school ID 7461, had a chronic absenteeism rate of 42.8%. And I show the math there. And the question is, what is being done by today, by School City of Mishawaka to lower the chronic absenteeism at the Caveman Academy of Virtual Excellence? Does School City have any possession, any objective evidence to show that School City actions aren't in fact actually working to lower this chronic absenteeism rate at the Caveman Academy? Question four, it is my understanding that the Caveman Academy of Virtual Excellence maintains its own valedictorians and salutatorians, completely separate and independent from the list maintained by the brick and mortar Mishawaka High School. For the school year ended 2025, would it be possible to obtain a name-redacted list of the top 10 Cave Academy of Virtual Excellence graduates ranked in descending order by cumulative grade point average? That concludes my questions for this evening. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Dave. Moving on to the consent agenda. Five point zero one, approval of the minutes of the November 5th, 2025 meeting. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the minutes of the November 5th, 2025 board meeting as presented. Five point zero two, approval of the minutes of the November 12th, 2025 executive session. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the minutes from November 12th, 2025 executive session as presented. Five point zero three, approval of the bill warrants and payroll. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the bill warrants and payroll in the amount of eight million 500 and, or yeah, eight million 507,000 dollars, 72, I can't read today. Eight million 507,072.36 from the appropriate funds. Sorry. Five point zero four, approval of the October bank statement reconciliation report. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the October bank statement reconciliation report as presented. Five point zero five, approval of technology equipment disposal. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees allow the disposal of technology equipment as presented. Five point zero six is approval of donations. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the donations as listed and presented. Mr. Weber, would you like to speak on this?
Yes, I'd just like to speak on one item in particular, the donation from Brian Grandike, which is going to the Science Department in Mishawaka High School. Proud to announce that his mother, who was a Mishawaka teacher as well at LaSalle, also a proud member of class of 75 in Mishawaka High School. When I called her yesterday, my wife suggested to inform her of the donation, she said, I told her that Brian had donated. She said, oh, that's nice. Brian who? I said, well, your son, Brian. He said, oh, okay. And then she wasn't aware of it at all. And then as a result of that, she got the, I forwarded her the information and she was just flabbergasted as well as we were and we're very appreciative. If you would send our thanks to him for the generous donation. And he's representing Mishawaka quite well, as is his mother.
And I'd like to just say quickly that we are just so blessed that he has such an amazing combination through Mishawaka because he said 20 years ago, he had like the first classes of the chemistry in that at the club high school. And that had led in then his desire and love of the foundation that he now is, after going through the college and PhD, he is now working on college in Boston. And he wants to thank School City of Mishawaka and all those that were part of his educational process because it is par, you know, it is excellent. And we are just very glad to hear that he has this combination here. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We appreciate him. Five point zero seven is approval of position descriptions. It is recommended that the Board approve position descriptions as presented. Five point zero eight is approval of the consent agenda. It is recommended that the Board of School Trustees approve the consent agenda. So moved. Second. So moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Before we move into business, if anyone now would like to go, they may. Six is reports and discussion items. There is nothing. Seven is human resources. Seven point zero one, personnel report, Mr. Labon.
Thank you, President Parks. This evening, we are recommending the appointment of just one certified, three classified and 16 extracurricular activities. As always, happy to answer any questions the board may have, but if not, it's recommended the board approve the personnel report dated December 3rd, 2025 as presented.
So moved.
Second. Moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Eight is curriculum instruction and technology. There's nothing. Nine is business and operations. Nine point zero one, September major account financial report, Mrs. Dutoy.
Thank you, President Parks. I'm going to review the end of the third quarter of the budget year of 2025, starting with the education fund. It's right on track as we have expended approximately 74, rounding up to 75% of our expenditures, but we also have gained a little bit more than 75% of our revenue. So we are in the black quite well with that, with a ending balance of nine million 895,483. The referendum is we have not received all of the revenue as we're only at 53.45%, but we will get, be getting our next tax deposit within the next couple of weeks, which will bring us up to what we should be receiving for the year. And we've only expended 64.98, which is less than 75% of the year. So that will also have a extra positive balance in it as we end the month. The debt service, there's been no activity in it since June, since we paid our bond payments. So it's staying the same as it was at the end of June and it's holding with a 54% expended with 53% received revenue wise. The referendum capital debt service, we've expended 50%, but we've received 53.4%. But with our debt, with our tax deposits coming in the next couple of weeks, that will all even out and we'll still have a positive balance at the end of December. Operations, it's a different story. We've expended 70%, but we've only received 55.3% of our revenue. But as we're at a negative balance of 278,785, that's due to the fact that I'm trying to see if we can get by with the 15%. I'm not really think we're going to, but I'm trying to be optimistic. So there'll probably be a larger transfer coming up in the next month, in the, in December, to bring us into the positive for the end of the year. The rainy day is doing quite well, but it's holding some extra funding, which will be transferred to the operations as we're trying to keep it in the black, but it's sitting at three million 264,826 at the end of September. The school lunch fund is also doing quite well as we have the free, free meals, breakfast and lunch. So she's bringing 77% more revenue than, of than what was expected in '24 and she's only expended 65% of what she expended in '24. So she is gaining ground and she ended September with two million 415,377. But she is looking at the project of remodeling the Emmens cafeteria, so that's why that budget is so high. And the self-insurance fund ended with a balance of 149,261, but I looked at it and it is growing in October and November. We just had some larger expenditures with the summer items that people had done. So it's down a little bit, but it will be back up by the end of the year. Anybody has any questions? We'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
No, but I want to thank you for all your work on, on the financials. It's amazing that we're staying above water at this point in time, so thanks to your diligence.
I like to be above water.
Oh, I agree.
We all do, yes.
All right, is there a motion? So moved. Second. Are there any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine point zero two, recommendation to approve year-end appropriation transition. 9.02, recommendation to approve year-end appropriation transfer resolution, number 2025-11. Mrs. Dutoy?
Thank you, President Parks. This is the resolution that I asked for your approval on, that as we close the year out, we run a process through our software that balances out the different appropriation lines, where there's extra money, it covers the ones that have went a little in the negative, so it just all balances out at the end.
Great. Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. 9.03, recommendation to approve the rainy day fund of operations fund transfer resolution, number 2025-12. Mrs. Dutoy?
Yes, this is the resolution I was referring to for the operations fund. It is the balance of the eight million that had been requested in our 2025 budget, which is, so this is the extra 3 percent above the 15 of 1,177,129.23 cents. I'd like to have permission to transfer from the rainy day into the operations to bring it back into the black.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 9.04, Policy Analytics C1 Presentation. Dr. Stevens?
Thank you, President Parks, and I will invite April Fiderling to make her way up to the podium, because she will be giving this presentation. But while she's walking up, Policy Analytics has built and maintains a proprietary local government revenue model to forecast property tax revenue impacts for school districts. They can produce tax-based forecasts and accurately estimate circuit breaker cap credits for any school district by modeling property taxes on a per parcel basis. Tonight's presentation is their forecast model for School City Mishawaka. And if I can cheat just a little bit, Mr. Strawn had inquired briefly of how did we come to partner with Policy Analytics, and I can certainly send you the contract the Board approved and all of that piece. Last spring, when the Board was working with Baker Tilly on making a determination, do we move forward with the new Hums Elementary or not, we also knew that the General Assembly was taking under consideration what we now know to be Senate Enrolled Act I. And so the concern was, can we do this? Are we going to be able to navigate this through time? And at that time, Baker Tilly certainly said, yes, you can do this. However, after you move forward with the Hums project, we recommend, Baker Tilly, that you partner with Policy Analytics to really give you the fully detailed analysis that you need to sort of forecast how things are going to be working for you in the future. And so, we took that recommendation, and this Board approved that, and that's how Ms. Fiderling is here today. So that's at least the Cliff Notes version of that piece for you. So with that, I will quit yapping, so that she can give her presentation pertaining to the tax impact of Senate Enrolled Act I that they will have on, that it will have on School City Mishawaka.
Perfect. Well, thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight again. I'm April Fiderling. I'm with Policy Analytics right now, but prior to Policy Analytics, I was with Warsaw Community Schools for 11 years. So of eight of those, I was in the CFO role, and I absolutely, I know I'm crazy, but I love school finance. I would not have left my role to do anything besides help other districts navigate the difficult world of school finance. Not only is it difficult, but it's ever-changing. And so we'll talk about some of those ever-changing things that are happening to the district here, just on property tax funds, not on any of the other funds. These are just the property tax revenue funds. So, again, Policy Analytics takes data on a parcel level, and so we pull all of the county data on the parcel level, and we run all of our reports and the revenue projections based on that data. So, Senate Enrolled Act I, it is something that we have not seen in school finance in a long time, because if you could see this list here, this is a number of changes that are happening in Senate Enrolled Act I. They are going to impact the revenues for the district on the property tax revenue funds. That's debt service, operations, and referendum. So we'll take a look at each one of those, but here's the nice one-pager, a clip to say, what is Senate Enrolled Act I? Well, there's a lot of things, so you need a big sheet. So first of all, the changes to the deductions. The standard homestead deduction is phasing out. It was a flat deduction, so it stayed steady. As your assessed value grew on your home, it became a smaller percentage. So the standard deduction is being phased out, and I'll reiterate this again, this is over a five-year time period. So this is probably why most school districts were like, let's figure this out with the professionals, because before, you could look at your revenue, you know, over a couple-year period, but over five to six years of this being implemented, this is going to be an impact, be very impactful, and it's nice to know what's coming down the road. So, back on track here, homestead deduction, the standard is being phased out, but the supplemental deduction is being phased in and increasing over the next five years. So essentially, by 2031, a home's value will, a home will be only taxed on a third of its value. And secondly, the 2% tax cap category has new deductions that were not in place prior. So essentially, as new deductions are increasing or being implemented, if you think of it as a mathematical calculation, gross assessed value, subtract out deductions, get you your net assessed value. And why is that important for districts? Because net assessed value times your tax rate gets your revenues. So as that net assessed value goes down, to get the same or increased revenue in your levy, your tax rate needs to increase. So kind of working through those mechanics there. We'll talk about the impact to the district as we go along. So switching from deductions to credit changes, they have implemented a new homestead credit, which is 10 percent or $300 max on a homestead liability. So property tax owners will be seeing this credit on their bills. So what does that mean for the district? It means unrealized revenue or created additional circuit breaker loss for the district. So we'll talk about that impact coming up. Next is the business personal property tax changes. So the business personal property tax changes, they made a new de minimis amount. So anything, prior to Senate Enrolled Act I, any business personal property that was $80,000 or below was essentially tax exempt. Now, it's up to $2 million. So any business personal property tax that is $2 million or below is pulled out of the net assessed value calculation. And then the second piece to that business personal property tax change is any new equipment can follow the depreciation scale down to zero. It used to follow the scale down to 30 percent and be taxed at that 30 percent. Well, now essentially, if they purchase new equipment, it can be tax exempt by the time following the depreciation scale. So what's built into the report is what we have calculated for in 2027, when that 20 million and below is pulled out of the net assessed value. We have those numbers, we know that, we'll talk about that. It's actually about 39 million for the district coming out of the net assessed value calculation. What we don't know is what businesses will do to get creative, to depreciate their equipment down to zero to become tax exempt. So there's some other mechanics that will affect the district later on. And then some small adjustments, farmland, the capitalization rate going from 8 to 9 percent, and then other deductions going away. So just talking about Senate Enrolled Act I, those changes took, you know, a decent amount of time, so I'm going to kind of speed through the tax-based profile and then start talking about your revenues. So what is School City of Mishawaka? What does the tax base look like? Well, you have two taxing districts. One is 98.8 percent, and the tax rate in that taxing district is $4.09. So what we're talking about there is, let's talk about the Penn Township for a minute. That taxing district, it only has 1.2 percent of your total properties, and that's only at a $2.32. So the mechanics of taxing districts, when you have the higher tax rate, pretty much anything above $3, that's when your circuit breaker loss starts to go up. And that's what you can see here, looking at this slide, 80 percent of your parcels are at the tax caps or above. So you can see there's cap one, two, and three breakdown there. One is residential, two is your long-term facility cares, apartments, and farmland, and then your cap three is your commercial. So you can see, the district already sees a decent amount of circuit breaker loss. So with these SEA1 changes, really what that means is it drives that circuit breaker loss up. And I know I'm speeding, shooting forward here, but talking about that gross assessed value minus deductions create your net assessed value kind of calculation again. The green dotted line, you can see, that is the gross assessed value, and that is forecasted to trend upward, because it does follow the assessments, the home sale values, and that will continue to grow. But as the deductions, and as you can see, they are implemented in '26 for the 2% tax cap category, and then kind of speeds up a little bit until 2031, then they kind of start to flatline. So 2032, we have a new base floor for assessment and deductions. So that's when it kind of slows down, and that's when we see in 2032, we will start to see net assessed value trend upward again, but from '27 to 2031, we do estimate about a negative 1.7 percent growth on your net assessed value. And that is basically because the deduction changes, the business personal property tax being pulled out of the net assessed value in 2027. '27 is the biggest dip that you'll see because of that business personal property tax coming out of that net assessed value calculation. So talking about net assessed value, gross assessed value, let's talk about revenue scenarios next. So like I said prior, this is property tax revenue funds, so debt, referendum, and operations. This is just as kind of a model of the operations revenue, I'm sorry, referendum revenue by itself. So as you can see, in 2026, we did see a little bit of growth in our net assessed value for the district. So you did see a little bit of an increase in revenue. And that's what has been trending across the state. Gross assessed values have grown, net assessed values have grown, and it can keep up, maybe not necessarily with inflational costs, but at least it continues to grow. But since these Senate Enrolled Act I deduction changes are driving down net assessed value, at the steady tax rate of 2434, you will see a decrease in your referendum revenue due to that net assessed value decreasing. So this is just a sample slide to show you that referendum revenue. When I mentioned prior, the circuit breaker loss. So this is just a one kind of, one-pager visual of the circuit breaker loss. The solid blue is the traditional circuit breaker. That's the 1, 2, and 3% tax caps. The additional on top, so the blue with the lines through it, I'm sorry, and the blue is the operations fund tax cap, because the debt service is protected from the traditional circuit breaker loss right now. As you can see, from '25 to '26, the traditional, the dark blue circuit breaker goes down slightly. That's because some of the deductions push some of the properties below the tax cap, so it pushes it down slightly. But it is immediately backfilled by that 10% or $300 credit, creating additional circuit breaker loss for the district. You could see the blue with the lines through it is what hits the operations fund, and the orange is the debt service. And the referendum, that only has some small credits that were there prior. The 10% $300 credit does not hit the referendum fund, just debt and operations currently. So this is a sample to show, traditional circuit breaker goes down slightly in '26, but those credits backfill that additional circuit breaker loss and takes it up to about $2.7 million. Then in 2027, same thing, but traditional circuit breaker continues to climb, and so do those 10% or $300 credits. But then in 2028, we see a big jump. What's different in 2028? Well, Senate Enrolled Act I also made a change to LIT, local income tax, and a piece of the local income tax that will affect your district is the property tax relief credit that's happening for homeowners right now. So the county, St. Joe County, has about $57 million applied to homeowners' bills currently in property tax relief credit. When that goes away, and since so many are already at the caps, it creates additional circuit breaker loss for the district. So that's where we see that big jump from just over $3 million to over $4 million in 2028. So talking circuit breaker loss, this is what the most impactful piece to the district is. And when we look at a revenue kind of one-pager here, so this is a lot of information, I know it's a little difficult to see from far away, but essentially, at the top, we have certified levies for the four property tax revenue funds. Then we have the unfunded credits, unfunded credits, circuit breaker loss, and then you have your net levies. So think of certified levies minus unfunded credits, get your net levy. So think of it just as simple math there. Certified levies minus the unfunded credits, there is a little bit of charter share modeled in there, but that's just kind of as placeholders, because that will change as the student counts change. But the net levy is what we'll focus in on. And I really just want to focus in on operations tonight, because that's where the impact is. If you take a look at net levy for operations fund, and it is difficult to see, and I don't know if I have a pointer on this, maybe I do. I do, but it doesn't work on the TVs, that's right. So whoever has the pointer, if you could go down to net levy and operations, yep, and just kind of go to the left of the screen a little bit. So that's kind of where my eyes want to focus on right now. So as you can see, operations levy for 2025 was just over 1.9 million. If you take a look at 2026 with the increase in circuit breaker loss, the circuit breaker loss for '25 was just over 2.1 million and grows to just over 2.8 million in '26. So that means revenue for operations fund will be projected to be almost half a million dollars less in 2026 than it was in 2025, due to that circuit breaker increase from the additional 10% $300 credit that was created. So then, if we look at 2027, you'll see the operations levy go down to right around 1 million. So that's an additional $400,000 loss just in the operations levy. I'm going to take a deep breath before I say this one, because this is the most impactful. In 2028, when that property tax relief credit goes away, that's when the traditional, or I'm sorry, the overall circuit breaker loss surpasses the levy and essentially creates a negative revenue into the operations fund for the district. So if there are no changes to the LIT or property tax changes in legislation time prior to 2028, the revenue for the district is projected to be negative. It can't be negative, the negative would then go to the debt service fund, but it would be zero. And then essentially, it'll be similar to that in 2029 and 2030. And I'm going to say that with kind of a little asterisk, because right now, as I said earlier, the debt service fund is not protected from the 10% $300 credit that is created. But I believe, we believe S&amp;P may have some recommendations to our legislators to say, you need to protect your debt service fund so your districts can make their bond payments, because there's only so much in cash balance to offset that difference. If they protect the debt service fund in this coming legislation in 2026, and it goes into effect in 2027, essentially, majority of that $300,000 in debt service unfunded credits or circuit breaker loss would then go to the operations fund. So if that happens, and we're just going to use quick math, around $300,000, just for simplicity of it. If the debt service fund is protected in 2027, you would see revenues from 2026 at 1.4 million in operations down to 700,000 in operations, then you would definitely see zero in 2028, '29, and 2030, because of that, if the debt service fund is protected. But if the debt service fund is protected, and it hits operations, but there's nothing in operations or no levy in operations to sustain it, it will then go back to the debt service fund, if that's how they write it. So then, you would have to keep an eye on your debt service fund in 2028, '29, and 2030, because there would be a couple hundred thousand in unfunded credits hitting there. So, like I've said before, this is probably the most difficult, I still live in Warsaw, and I work with a lot of northern Indiana school districts, and this is probably one of the most difficult to deliver, because it is one of the most severe impacts due to the high circuit breaker loss that the district already sees, and then what the created credits do for the district, and the LIT change. and then what the created credits do for the district and the lit changes. The lit changes in 2028 are, as you can see, one of the most detrimental years in having zero revenue in operations, when operations is a highly inflational fund, highly inflational cost fund anyways, with all the utilities, the fuel, bus purchases, just upkeep on mechanicals and equipment, potential things to offset into debt if you had capacity, capital projects, but you cannot put your utilities inside of debt service. You can't put your bus drivers or your custodians, you cannot put them in debt service. So I will leave it there, because I could go on and on about not having an operations fund dollars, but you all know that you have to operate the buildings, you have to get the kids to school in those buses. And hearing that there is negative revenue in the operations fund is a tough one. So I will, I will end on that note. I know it's a terrible note to end on, but at Policy Analytics, it is tough news to deliver, but at least you can see it coming. It's something that, I mean, being in your shoes, to know what's coming, to best be able to plan for and prepare ourselves for, because we know we have to educate kids, we know we have to get kids to school, we have to do it, but it's just how we do it and how we can best be prepared for it. So thank you for having me. If you guys have any questions, I'll open it up, but.
Thanks.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Where's Mr.?
Right, we need a fundraiser.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Safe travels back to Warsaw. I don't even want to, no, I'm just kidding. 10 is policy updates. 10.01, second reading of the approval of policies. Dr. Stevens?
Thank you, President Parks. As you know, when we bring policies to you for review, there's a first reading of those policies, where essentially, it's just presented to the board for your consideration. And then the second meeting, you then formally vote to approve those. And so tonight, 10.01 is that second reading. So we are asking for action on this. To give you a quick little review, the proposed policy updates presented to this second reading are part of the NEOLDA Volume 36, Number 2. The acronym they use is EDGAR and UGG. And EDGAR, in this case, you know, is the Education Department General Administrative Regulations and the Uniform Grant Guidance. So as we said earlier, every policy that NEOLDA recommends is to help us to stay compliant, reduce liability, and benefit the school corporations. So this update for your consideration has 17 revised policies, two technical corrections, which are usually very minor, and then one policy recommended for recession. And with that, these changes are part of their ongoing efforts to ensure policy alignment with current state and federal laws, court decisions, Office for Civil Rights guidance, and best practices across Indiana schools. So I'm happy to best entertain questions you, the board, may have on the variety of policies here, but if there are none, we are looking for your approval of the policies as presented.
Move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.02, First Reading of Policies. Dr. Stevens?
Very good, thank you. And this is the first reading of Volume 37, Number 1, from November 2024. This includes five revised policies and one new policy. So highlights of the changes include Policy 5500 over student conduct. That policy's been revised to include provisions that addressed academic honesty and optional provisions addressing the use of artificial intelligence. Policy 7540.04 is sort of the staff technical technology acceptable use in safety policy, which also essentially includes a provision for artificial intelligence as well. And then 7540.09 specifically addresses artificial intelligence. So you can sort of see where some of those are going. Then the Volume 37, Number 2, from April of 2025, they're also included in tonight's first reading. Some of those policies approve, include Policies 1216, 3216, 4216, and 5511, which include dress and appearance. Those policies are revised to replace the term grooming with the term appearance, because the term grooming has other connotations, to be quite honest with you. But that's what policy is. You get into the weeds of this stuff, and that's what they're looking at. Policy 5410, Promotion, Placement, and Retention of Students. That policy's been revised to include the addition of Indiana Code 2032-8-5, which includes the retention now, the required retention of third-grade students who do not pass I REAT 3 after participation in summer school, reading remediation, and all of the steps we now have to take there. And then Policy 7530.01 is the cell phone allowance, and we've updated this change for School City in a way to make sure that it aligns with the way we're going to compensate our employees for their personally-owned cellphone at work. So that'll be built into their salary, as opposed to the stipend as we've had in the past. So with that, I'm happy to entertain questions the board may have on the first reading of these policies. They are indeed riveting, and a special thanks to Mrs. Johnson, who has now joined us on policy review. None of her policies are here, that's probably going to be in a future meeting, but she sits in now on the meetings, which are equally as riveting as the item is to discuss at the board meeting.
Fair and lightening.
So if there are no questions on that?
Thank you. Thank you. 11 is Superintendent's Report and Action Items. Dr. Stevens?
Thank you. As we wrap up this evening, a few announcements. Number 1, the Vespers Event is going to be at Mishwaka High School this Sunday, and that's at 3 o'clock. So if you've never attended or you're interested in attending, this Sunday at 3, at the auditorium, will be the Vespers Event. It's a phenomenal event. If you haven't had a chance and you can get over there, please do so. Next, the Mishwaka Food Drive, the 45th School City of Mishwaka Food Drive, 45, will be Saturday, December 13. A special thank you to the Mishwaka community for donating, and to Mr. Vincent Pharoah, and then all the associated volunteers for making this event happen each year. I know several members of the board and the administrative team volunteer at the event on the day of the food drive, but remember, there are folks collecting food, as at the alumni luncheon today. Lots of food and things collected there. All of the elementary buildings are collecting different food items that go. It's really quite an event to see. So thank you to everybody who makes that come together. And last but not least, winter break in the midpoint of the year is right around the corner. I just want to take a moment, and we, this will be our last meeting of 2025, to thank everybody that helped make School City of Mishwaka work. We have improved student learning outcomes trending in the right direction, increased participation in and at our extracurricular events, and of course, improved student attendance are all reasons behind my optimism for a great start to the 2026 semester. So with that, that concludes my superintendent's report. I'm happy to entertain questions the board may have. Seeing none, President Parks, I turn it over to you.
Okay. 12 is Communications. 12.01, Public Announcements. Reminder for families, school will be closed December 22 through January 2 for winter break. The next meeting of School City of Mishwaka Board of School Trustees is January 14, 2026, at the Administration Center. Before we close, this is the last board president position I will hold in this meeting. It has been five years, it has been COVID, it has been a new superintendent, it has been referendums, and I am very proud to have sat here in this position for as long as I have. But it's time for us to cycle the board through, and we, I believe, we will need to vote on it in January, but Mrs. Lehman will become board president. So with that, thank you to listening to me for the last five years. And I appreciate all of you, and I look forward to 2026. So with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.